Good morning.
Good morning.
We'd like to go call the meeting to order. Before we do that, I'd like to thank Schlegel High School for allowing us to be able to come in, and we're just so happy to be here today. Before we get started, I'd like to go over our board norms and protocols that as board members, we will, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We will agree to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task in conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And with that being said, could we all stand and have the pledge of allegiance, please? After which, we will have roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Westphal, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Randy Lopez.
Present.
Wanda Brown McPage.
Present.
Valdina Nguyen.
Present.
Stacy Yeager.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we approve the regular agenda? So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
I meant to ask, could we add one item to the agenda?
Okay, what is that item?
Discipline. I'd like to at least establish a time. Oh, I would like to establish a time in which we can talk about that a little bit more in depth. I didn't know where to place it on the agenda, so I wanted to add the item to the agenda so that we can establish a date and a time to have a little bit more conversation about it, because I've received a lot of phone calls, emails, and I would like to see us have a conversation about discipline.
Any comments from other board members? Her recommendation was that we would have add a conversation about discipline to our agenda, because there have been several phone calls given to her that she has received in questioning about that.
So, we have a motion, we have one on the floor and a second to approve, so do you want to take that motion back and amend the motion or?
I would prefer that we go ahead and approve the agenda, and then, at a later time, Ms. Page, we can sit down and talk and then add it on to another agenda so that we can discuss it, because we need to get specific information, and that way, those who are within our district are handling the discipline within the schools, they can put together a report and bring it to us.
But all I wanted, because I wanted it on the record, and I apologize, I wasn't thinking at that moment, is at least establish a date and a time.
We can do it during the calendar portion of the agenda.
Okay, because I didn't know where it fit, and I didn't want to jump on something else, but at least establish a date and a time. I'm not asking them to come in and give any data or anything now. We just need a time to talk, so I didn't know where to go to put it, so no disrespect, but I just think it needs to be, that we need to establish a time to talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, the motion has been made that we approve our regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, and we will add that on as a part of our calendar. Thank you. At this time, we will be open for a community comment, and wanted to make sure that we understand our policy in relation to that, so want to make sure that those individuals who are going to be coming forward, we are, have rules for speaking, and persons are eligible to participate at this particular time, that at the beginning of your remarks, speakers must state their name, you must give your address and your phone number, that shall be recorded on the roll to be maintained by our board clerk. This requirement will permit the board to direct their concerns to the proper school officials for response and follow-up. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes, and you will be timed, and we will be advised as to when your time has expired. We do ask that speakers wishing to submit written materials to supplement their remarks should make 12 copies for proper distribution. If there's a hot issue, we want speakers to be encouraged not to duplicate the remarks of others. Instead, speakers should seek to introduce new points and/or perspectives so that everyone's concerns may be heard. If a person wishes to discuss a topic which is already on the board agenda, the speaker's comments will be deferred until that item is called for discussion. The speaker will be permitted to comment as determined by the board president or presiding officer. Excuse me, the speaker must adhere to the three-minute time limit. So with that being said, we will, excuse me, we will have a, our first person, Ms. Manik, coming up with cultural sensitivity training for staff. Is she here?
Okay, thank you. Then we will have Ms. Carolyn Wyatt, topic on community input.
Good morning.
Good morning.
New board members, glad to have you here. I want to know, over 900 students at Northwest, it's overcrowded, understaffed since the first day of school. What additional staff did you send or remove? Thirty to forty-five students in a classroom. An additional support is going to other schools. Why not Northwest? How many staff principals or assistants are there right now? Northwest has been staffed for, has not been staffed for success since day one. What is the policy for school district for persons being escorted from buildings? The common practice. I have never been escorted out of any building. How concerned are you? Safety and accountability, security or location, with 900 students, I request response in five days. I just want to know how concerned the board members are about each school. Every school should have the same, the same. Nothing should be different. If you do it for one school, do it for all school. How many security guards do you have? How many teachers are you short? If it's been known since day one, things would be low. Things would be low with the students, because they got thirty-five, forty-five students in a class, can't teach that many kids, and it's best to have success. So, I'm concerned, and I just want to know, and I'm just, you know, what every parent, and I think also another problem is that it seem like students have the run of everything, because if they're not disciplined, you can't teach them. If they got cell phones and they're texting one another, that's another problem. Should be no cell phones is their problem. You know, go to the office, use the phone. If it's an emergency, we'll get in touch with them. But I think all this work together, you know, for success, you don't need to phone kids. They texting one another in school, they're getting in arguments, after school's a fight. So all this work is success for a student. And if it's a work, if it's a work environment, if we all have phones, a work environment, we can do our work, so the kids, your kid can do theirs, and no parent should be sagging. You don't have a belt, it's your parents' concern. Go home, we'll send you home, your parent bring you back when they got a belt for you.
Your time is up.
All right, thanks you very much.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your comments. Next, we will have Annette Peoples on leadership.
My name is Annette Peoples, and I live at 2610 North Forty-Sixth Stairs in Kansas City, Kansas, and I raised a lot of kids through the District 500. The leaders that was at the schools, at the school is great leaders. My son came to Northwest in sixth grade, and he was having problems, and he didn't have a father, his father passed, and the leaders grabbed up on my son, showed him how to be a man. I couldn't show them only how to think, I could show them how to be a woman. And to hear, it hearted my heart to hear that these leaders are being put out to school. And as a parent, I had concerns. My son was there, sixth grade, forty students, and he's trying to learn, and there was a fistfight behind him, because, and the, and the security guards and the leaders would come up there and get the kids, and they, we talked many a times with the board. They said, we're going to talk about it, we're going to talk about it. Now is, we just think this is the problem, we're going to push this person. Now, knowing when you remove a person out of a situation, it hurts kids. Now these kids going to be worser off. They trying to find this new ground person to come in this school. I believe you need to bring the person, just like you gave the chiefs fifty years. Give the district the same years. Give them a time, bring them back and give them a time. Say, hey, in a year, if it haven't straightened up, remove them. Don't remove them in the middle of the year. Our kids can't remove schools in the middle of the year. You can't do that. You have to be fair all around. And you know, it's sad. I'm looking to the board. We voted all of y'all on this board, because y'all showed us promising. And to take it and turn it and spit on us, you know? Or was you true what you said? Excellent. Success. The future. If you remove the two men from the thing, the future's gone. The boy's going to try to figure out. They've been a Hispanic, blacks and Hispanic school for years. And it seems it feel like since they building a new building, let's remove people and bring new people in. How about all those people stayed and fought for that building for years? They had to move. That's like you have a new house, they rebuilt your house, and they tell you, hey, you can't afford to move out. But I'm going to leave with this note, it's on y'all hearts. You're going to have to live with it, not us.
Thank you for your comment. We are now ready for the reports of the superintendent, the welcome and update for Schlegel High School. Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Good morning.
How is everyone on this 11th day in Black History Month?
Great.
All right. So I am here to give you an update of Schlegel High School. If you don't know, we are the Stallions, we are blue and gold. We are very happy, and I'm very proud to be the principal of Schlegel. So I'm, I'm a brief person, I'm not a verbose person, so I'm going to give you what you need to hear, what I want you to hear, that I think is important, but all of this is about our students, and you will see what I mean by that. So currently, Schlegel has 800 students, we're always in the low eight hundreds, and first semester, we had 525 students whose attendance was 90% or above. We also have an 86% attendance rate, which is up from 84% from, at last year. ACT composite, which is always heavy on my heart, we have gone from a 14.3% to a 15.4%. Our current projection for graduation rate is 86%, and our discipline data has declined significantly, and I'm just going to give you suspension rates. Last year, we were at 34.9, 95%, and currently, we are at 24.05%. Now, all of that has shown growth. Thank you. All of that is growth, and the reason I believe that has happened is because we have an outstanding behavior health team here. You know, there's a lot of conversation around mental illness, social-emotional stability, and we knew that at Schlegel, if we wanted to get our numbers to go up, we had to address that. So we have a great behavior health team, which consists of an interventionist, three counselors, four social workers, a dean, and beginning tomorrow, an ISS monitor who will help kids make better decisions, help them talk through that. So what I want to do is, Ms. Zoe Elmer, Ms. Zoe Elmer wants to, she is going to speak about the behavior health team.
Hello, I'm Zoe Elmer, and I'm in the 11th grade. My freshman year, I got into my first fight. Sophomore year, I met Dr. Bigby, Ms. Mika, and Ms. Amanda. Ms. Bigby, she helped me in so many ways. She helped me with giving me the words of wisdom, as in, like, she, she taught me how to cope for myself, she taught me how to...
Take your time, it's okay, take your time.
So, Dr. Bigby, she started this program, this alternative program, that for students that needed help or extra progress, and I felt that the program was best for me to go. The alternative program was a class that we had in the morning to the afternoon. The alternative, the alternative program helped me in so many ways. It taught me self-control, anger control, and stopping into drama, unnecessary drama. Then I met, then I spoke to Dr. Bigby alone. She taught me, she told me, she spoke to me about things that I never seen, and she showed me a bigger picture of materness. Ms. Mika and Ms. Amanda always been my listening ear. They always been there for me. They always been listening to me, listening to my cries, my anger. My junior year is now, I started Twilight, I ended up on the wrong foot, so I decided to go to Twilight with Ms. Bigby. And Dr. Bigby helped me get my grades together, she helped me, she helped me academically, and she helped me mentally and personally. Ms. Amanda and Ms. Mika helped me mentally and personally, and they taught me independence, they taught me that I can do anything, just stay out of drama. Ms. Thompson? A1. Even though she, she's there, she's there, she, you know, see her in the hallway, she hi and bye, you know? But the last thing is, I just want to thank Dr. Bigby, Ms. Mika, and Ms. Amanda for working with me and listening to me. It given me words of wisdom that I never thought, if I never got close to them this year, I don't know what path I would have been on. Now that I'm on a right path, I could tell anybody, be the words of wisdom to them.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And Dr. Faust, Dr. Faust, I have one more. He is on the superintendent's student advisory board. He's going to be brief. I know him.
Hey, everybody, how y'all doing?
Good morning.
Ian Perkins, attending at Schlegel High School. I met some of y'all previous before, nice stuff. How y'all doing? Good morning.
Speaking to the mic, please, so we can hear you.
Kind of nervous, you know? Well, I'm here to talk about the program as well, and the people there in it. Well, I had like previous problems before entering this building as a freshman, so with that being said, I got like a real bad anger issue. I could, like, turn the building up, so with that being said, like, make the walls go crazy. So I had help previous with Ms. Thompson, Ms. Phelps, Amanda, Bigby, teachers within the building, Ms. O'Neill, Whitton, and I could say the janitors too. So, they helped me a lot of maintaining my anger issues. The program, it's a good program, you can, it maintains you, you, you mainly focus on what you got to do in school. It steps aside all the bad things, so distractions and all that, you, you'll make, basically mature, you know, like, from entering middle school going into high school. They prepare you with the steps that you need to know for the future, that I need to say. So, I had previously been an ASP, my freshman year, my 10th grade year, I was in Twilight, and now this year, I can honestly say that I stayed in school with their help, every day. All right. Thank you.
So, what I want you to see is that when we address those needs, they are able to learn, they are able to stay in class. Our numbers could not have increased if we were not addressing the social-emotional health of some of our students. So thank you, and have a wonderful meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always good to be able to hear the success stories of our students, and recognizing what is most important for them, because they are works in progress, and as we are educating them, we also recognize we have to help them with their issues, which may be social and emotional. So with that, we will move on. We will now have the approval of the 2020A and 2020B bond series resolutions.
As at the Kansas City Board of Education approved the 2020A and 2020B bond series resolutions as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Finance Officer, Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director of Business Operations, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Dr. Faust, Madam Chair, it is a great day to be in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools.
Yes.
Today, we have Avery Dunston here with our bond manager, and he's going to go over with you a present presentation on the savings of thirty, over $30 million for the school district.
Mr. Covington, Board of Education, Dr. Faust, great to be here again, always good to see you. Again, as I've told you many times, as we go to different buildings, I'm always very impressed by your students and your staff, so just, I want to commend, commend everybody on that. Very briefly, this is a conversation we started back in August to September of last year. We developed a refinancing plan and strategy with the cabinet and finance staff, presented it to the board. We've obviously been monitoring interest rates since that particular time, and with particular objectives in mind. As you recall, when we talked back in September, the estimated savings at that time was 27 million of savings. As you all aware, interest rates change on a daily basis, and so we kept a standard and an objective to make sure we could meet that, that 27 million. We talked to Dr. Faust, Mr. Covington, and Dr. Faust and staff, about two weeks ago, indicated that interest rates are changing and moving down. We responded very quickly, and actually secured 30 million, over $30 million of savings for the school districts and taxpayers. The key to that is, you know, 30, it's no different than a mortgage refinance, right? So we're saving interest over the life of a bond issue. From a mill levy perspective, it provides the district ongoing mill levy flexibility and mill levy management options in future years, which I think is very, very important as well, and there's not many times and opportunities that there's a chance to save that much money, but still preserve the capacity to pay off your bonds earlier than what you thought you would, to potentially lower your mill levy in future years as well. So I think that's a very important objective in this entire plan of finance. And then the second component, if you recall, is we did, did secure funding for the remaining $8 million of the 2016 bond authority, so that $8 million is being used to help pay for the projects approved in the 2016 bond election. So the resolution you have before you this, this morning is two parts. One is approving the funding for the remaining $8 million, and the, approving the refinancing for the $30 million of savings.
Thank you so much. Could I get a motion, please, that we...
Can we have a discussion a little bit first before we have, or do you have to have the motion first?
No, we can have discussion.
No, I mean, do you have to have the motion first?
Technically, you're supposed to have the motion and then discussion.
The motion, okay, can I get a motion that we approve, the bond for refinancing resolutions?
You want the motion to, you can do it one of two ways, you can have two separate motions for each resolution, or you can have one motion for both resolutions, but there's two resolutions, as I understand it.
So could I get a motion that we approve the 2020A bond series resolution for refinancing? It's been moved. It's been moved, may I have a second? Second. It's been seconded. Are there any discussion?
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, so this one says eight, eight million taxable general obligation bonds, okay? So, help me understand what, be a little bit more specific. If I'm refinancing my house, and you are my counselor, I need a little bit more information, details before I sign on the deadline.
So, the first thing is the $8 million is not the refinancing, that's going to be the component.
Yes, speak in your microphone, please.
The $8 million is the remaining bond authority approved by voters in 2016. So if you recall, in 2016, only $227 million was originally issued, but the, but the bond was for 235 million. So this $8 million funds the balance of voter-approved bonds from 2016 to pay for 2016 construction projects. So that's the series 2020A resolution. The series 2020B resolution...
We're just on A.
Sorry.
Just on A.
Okay.
Okay, so from that then, did, and I guess this is a question for Dr. Faust and/or, I don't, Mr. Covington, whatever, did we have projects that took up all the, that spent all the 35, 235 million?
Yes, ma'am. The seller, the eight million, was to issue the remaining bonds to cover all the projects, so yes...
No, I'm sorry, so we had projects, let me ask it differently. We had projects that cost 235, but we had not sold, we had not sold, we had sold only 227.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand, thank you. That makes very good, thank you for that clarity.
Good question.
So, the questions I have.
Thank you. So the motion has been made and it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye. 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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. We're ready for bond B, for the resolution for 2020B bond series. Okay. Could I get a motion that we accept the 2020B bond series resolution to refinance bonds? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oh, are there any questions? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Could you also follow through and continue with your explanation of...
Yeah, absolutely, ma'am. So, so no different than somewhat of a mortgage, right? So we're really just taking old interest rates that are at higher levels, refinancing at lower interest rates, and by doing that, we're creating an annual interest cost savings. So it's really interest cost avoidance of about 30, $30,553,883 is the interest cost avoidance from refinancing bonds at a higher interest rate to a lower interest rates, and that's a savings, no different than a mortgage, of, we're saving that amount of money over the life of the bonds, which because of that, no different, it provides mill levy flexibility in future years for the board to evaluate on the annual basis as it sets its bond and interest mill levy.
Okay, so this resolution says 154 million.
Correct, yes, sir.
Where is, what is that, where's that figure come from?
That's the bonds that were issued to refinance outstanding bonds.
The bonds that we just, from the 227?
2016 bonds. So we're refinancing a portion of the 2016 bonds, and because we're refinancing a portion of the 2016 bonds, we're saving 30.5 million.
I understand that, but take us through the difference between 235 and 227. Okay, that was what was left over.
Yeah, that was, that's, so that was the 2000, that was the resolution you just approved, was the 235 to the 227.
Okay.
So now what we're doing is, we're refinancing the $150 million of the 227, saving the 30.5 million of interest.
All right. Now, what is the current interest rate, and what's the payoff date of that 154 currently?
Question, next year, we're paying them off earlier than planned, so originally, those bonds had a...
No, no, if we were not to refinance?
2048.
2048, if we do not refinance?
2047, if we do not refinance.
Okay. And if we do refinance?
You're paying them off in 2046. So we're paying them off a year earlier than planned, and we're saving 30.5 million dollars over the life of the bonds.
Okay, thank you.
The average interest rate of the current bonds is 5.39%. So if we did nothing, the, the current rate on the existing bonds would be 5.39%. The rate after refinancing is 3.10%, which results in the interest cost savings.
Any other question?
Madam Chair, if, if those... Madam Chair, if, if those, if that data hadn't been provided to us, then I would not have had to ask the question. So that's what concerns me. Every time you come here, you, you know, again, if, if I'm refinancing my house, you put that down in front of me before you ask for a signature. So that, that concerns me as we move forward. Now, I won't be around in 2046, so you don't have to worry about me.
Me neither.
But moving forward with the business of this district, thank you.
We did give permission to go forward when the interest rates dropped. So thank you, Dennis, for being adamant about watching it and waiting and continuing to watch so that we know that rates trend changed very quickly, which is why we voted to give Maxine the permission to go ahead and approve it once there was a rate. So thank you for saving the district money. Thank you for saving us millions of dollars that otherwise would have been overlooked. So thank you, once again, for being a great financial person that you are, and as well as Jasper, Piper Jaffrey, to help our district in this time, where we know that financial savviness of, is of the utmost importance for general districts. So thank you so much for the money that you are saving us. So thank you for your job, well done.
And Madam Chair, I do, again, I'm not questioning the economic thoughtfulness or responsibility. That's what we hired these people for.
Exactly.
I'm saying, as a matter of protocol, if you are refinancing your house, your accountant doesn't go ahead and say, at least they give you a call, okay? So I will say also, thank you, but that wasn't the point I was making, so thank you.
And I also wanted to make sure everyone understands that we did receive the information at our last meeting back in, at our meeting when we were at Wellburn Elementary about Piper Jaffrey, and the information was posted in here. So in the future, just recommend that at least when things like this come back up, that we go back and look at previous information so that we can study and be prepared. And there's nothing wrong with asking a question.
I know that, because in that document, we discussed that last time, remember, there was also a delay because the interest rates were not good.
Exactly.
So things change as, Dr., yeah, you said, very rapidly. But it is the responsibility of the Board to understand so that we can explain to our taxpayers.
Thank you.
So there was no, there's, one, yes, thank you. Two, no, there's no question about asking questions, that's our responsibility.
Exactly, thank you. So with that being in mind, could I get a motion that we approve the 2020 B Bond Series Resolution for Refinancing? Been seconded, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. We're now ready for to accept the, thank you from Piper Jaffrey, and thank you, Mr. Covington, really appreciate that. We're now ready to accept the informational report on strategy framework revisions.
So as at the Kansas City Board of Education, accept as information item, a report from strategic framework revisions as submitted by myself. So if I can get the slide on strategic planning. So on our December fourth, I think it was the December fourth, strategic meeting, a strategic planning meeting, we had our, Greenway came out and presented to the Board what their findings were from the, the communities. And so in there, we have put together what we would assume to be best protocol, best, the best way to address our strategic framework. So what we have done is we took the information from the Board meeting. We also took information from the community and wove it into what we deem as our theme one, theme two, three, and four. Now, over on the, the blue is what are outcomes. Outcomes are just that, after, our, what we're wanting to achieve based on each of the themes. So the strategic theme that we didn't, so that one's in red, so that one's considered the markup. Align social and emotional supports focused on the whole child. In that meeting, the, the Board was pretty adamant about making sure that we focused on the, the whole child. The next one for strategic theme two, we said expand opportunities for college and career readiness at all grades. So that's meaning we can actually start at our pre-K and go all the way through. It's not, it's not deemed strategic. Three, engage families and community in KCKPS's student success. Strategic thing four, attract, develop, and retain KCKPS employees. So the outcomes over here, where we changed some of the languages, increase academic achievement in literacy for all students. Increase academic achievement in math for all students. Prepare all students for college and career. And so based on this, this is where we would start. And then the next step is that we provide or we, we create teams and we have team leads. And so you'll start to see, one, how we will be able to support our themes, and it'll run through the budget. It'll run through, when we come to budget priorities, we would, we need to look back at how is our budget aligned to our strategic plan? When we are making investments towards the academic of our students, the academics of our students, we need to look back and say, how is it going to increase academic achievement in math or reading? And then how is it going to prepare students for college and career? So what we've done here is just provided an informational source, and you'll get more information as we continue along with our strategic framework. And at this time, I can answer any questions or concerns you have any at this point.
I have a question. And, and, and I made my comment when they presented before, because I'm always worried why we can't use the word proficient. We use increase, help me understand, because I think they need to be proficient, that, that's what the state is saying. They need to be proficient in math and reading, they need to be, we need to have a graduation rate. But we keep saying increase, and that just seems so broad, that if we say proficient, and what does it take to be proficient? That's what we're working for. So help me to understand why we're using increase instead of dealing with the word proficient, because that's what they're doing at the state level.
So let's say that we say that the students will be proficient at fifty percent, and we surpass fifty percent. You have to come back and then rewrite the plan. So as long as we're increasing now, we can look across the data points and look at trend data and say that we'll increase by three to five district percentage points. I think then we're getting too granular at that point. But if we continue to say that we're showing an increase, then it encapsulates all of it, so you're going to get it. So the goal is not for us to decrease, and of course, I'm on that same train with you, talking about proficiency. So definitely, we're looking at proficiency, but because of, if we name it proficiency, this is, these are just my thoughts. If we name it and we give it an actual number, what do we do if we surpass? But we'll always be increasing.
But can we still keep reminding them that we want our kids to be proficient?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I get scared, I only hear increase. And I, they, everybody needs to know what the state level, what the state is saying, and how the finances are connected to it. And we want our kids to be proficient, because, and we're, we're growing, and we want to keep working toward that. But that always, that's just my personal thing.
So one of the things that I think we could possibly do to appease that is put the state plan out there, the state plan. There's a, there's a page in the state plan that states by 2030, all schools will be at seventy-five percent proficient. And so we can put that overlay there to note that that's where the route that we're going. And we've also done some trend data, where David has mapped out points and how much growth we have to get by a certain, certain date.
Because I think parents need to know that, and, and they wonder why certain decisions are made. We're working toward the mark.
Yes.
And if we don't want to be below average.
Exactly.
Want to shoot for the stars, and people need to know what's going on, and why are you pushing this? Or maybe why these changes had to take place, that if they understood better, then that might help.
So tonight, I know I'm getting into my communications, but you'll see strategic three is where we'll have our parents as partners. And so in there, there'll be six sessions, where we'll be talking about academics, we'll be talking about college and career readiness, we'll talk about financial aid, we'll be talking about the after-school, we'll be talking communications, we'll be talking about jobs, we'll be talking about transportation, all in there. So we'll be updating the community, and so we're doing nine of those. There'll be six sessions, and then that'll take place in the spring. Then we'll do another set in the fall, and then we'll get better, we'll keep getting feedback. But the goal is to make sure that our community, our parents, understand where we're going and how to get there. And we're, we're just bringing it to them upfront, so I, I get exactly what you're talking about, and proficiency is where we're wanting to be.
Any other questions? Thank you. So could I get a motion that we accept the informational report on strategy framework revisions?
I make a motion that we accept the informational report on strategy framework revisions.
Could I have it seconded, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. We're now ready for the GoBook Toolkit contract?
As at the Kansas City Board of Education approved, GoBook Toolkits contracted, contract as submitted by Dr. Kelly Charles, Executive Director of Student Services and is recommended by myself, Dr. Charles Faust.
I'm sorry, Dr. Charles. Thank you.
I'd like to begin by saying good morning.
Good morning.
All of our Board members and Superintendent Faust. So I am excited to present to you our work over the past couple of months as we have been piloting a game-changing resource in GoBook Toolkit. So this presentation will also consist of information, not just about our pilot over the past two months, but it will also give you a very high-level and somewhat very detailed description of this online resource tool that is GoBook. So this presentation will seek to answer questions around what is it, what is it for, why do we need such a resource, and how will this support teachers and learners? So in addition to this presentation, I also will have for you an impact report so that you can see exactly how the educators in our department and teachers across our district have been using it. And then you will also see, also in your deck, the actual contract that we will move into over the next few years. So I'd like to begin with some basics about GoBook. GoBook was founded by two former teachers and administrators who wanted to help teachers. As a classroom teacher, that, I can tell you is extremely, a former classroom teacher, that's extremely important to me. You always want to be able, if you're going to purchase something, if you're going to pilot something, you want to make sure that the people who are actually designing and developing the product actually have the lens of being a classroom teacher. And so GoBook is aligned with some of the most widely-used research-based frameworks that make learning both rigorous for our students as well as engaging. The content is created by educators, specialists, and experts, and it's implemented throughout the country. Currently, GoBook is being used in over six-hundred schools and throughout forty-eight states. For the state of Kansas, we, along with Wichita, are the first two districts that are actually piloting and moving forward with the idea of purchasing for our students. So the outcomes of this brief presentation is to explain how GoBook can support teachers and students in classrooms in the following three areas. Number one is IEP development, and the foundational parts of the IEP, there are two parts that are called the present-level statement. That is the key component to the IEP. If you don't have a well-written one, then you can't get to the second most important, and that's going to be the IEP goals for our students. So GoBook is useful in helping teachers with IEP development. They will also have hundreds of strategies that can help students with instructional as well as behavioral practices. And finally, the implementation of GoBook can reduce and eliminate disproportionality. So over the past few years, we've certainly been talking a lot about the challenge of our students being college and career readiness. If you take a look at this slide, basically what this slide is telling us is that in order for our students to be college and career readiness, there are so many, so many cognitively complex skills that they have to have access to from elementary, middle, and high school. We need them to be able to analyze, evaluate, compare, delineate, measure, hypothesize, and so forth and so on. So the work of GoBook really is about supporting teachers to be able to get to the how of all of those verbs. We also know that our classrooms are filled with diverse learners, learners who bring so much of their rich experience to us, be it learners with cultural needs, language needs, social, emotional needs, and students with disabilities. These students, our students receiving special education services, may have a farther distance to climb in learning grade-level standard content, but the reality is that all of our students are not getting the opportunity to climb or to learn the knowledge and skills they need and that they are expected to have by being college and career readiness. And this is definitely a resource that will help us in that journey. So what are the benefits of GoBook? First and foremost, they will support teachers in crafting measurable standards-aligned goals and objectives when writing the IEP. They will provide teachers with high-quality assessments and instructional resources to use for progress monitoring in writing those present-level statements. And then finally, they contain a vast library of practices that support students both academically and behaviorally so that all students can have access to rigorous content. So not only will our purchase of GoBook go a long way in supporting all of our students, but equally as important, it will go a long way in supporting our students with disabilities and our students who are at risk. So if you remember a few months ago, back in the fall, I came before you to discuss disproportionality and the sanction against our district for our over-suspension of black students. And so remember that nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars, we had to set that aside so that we could address disproportionality. And so we needed to write a plan, that plan has been written, and we needed to be able to discuss what in that nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars were we going to use to address disproportionality? And so when we think about disproportionality, it really is the decreasing in the number of our in-school and out-of-school suspension. So in our plan to the state, we wrote in the use of GoBook because of the hundreds of resources that it has available to be able to support students who may need interventions for behavioral and social, emotional. I'm happy to say that late December, early January, that plan was passed by the state, so it was accepted. And so again, this is the set aside from the IDEA Part B, Section 611 and 619. And so, you know, this is just one way that we can provide a resource that will seek to eliminate disproportionality and reduce the number of students who are being suspended. So whenever we think about partnering with, with organizations and companies, we want to ensure that the services that we're using, or the products that we're using, that they are research-based and that they actually work. And so we want to ensure that whatever we purchase is grounded in research, and we can see evidence of the practice being effective. And so that was one of the reasons why, a couple of months ago, knowing that we needed to do some work around IEPs, that we wanted to be able to pilot GoBook. And so I never want to invest the resources of our district without knowing, not only is this resource a good resource, but is it a good fit for our teachers? Is it something that they can have some training around and actually be able to get in and see if it works? And so the only way you can sometimes do that is kind of having a pilot and testing it to see if it works. I was encouraged because GoBook, what they actually work with, the districts that they support- support, would be in research studies. So they are committed to conducting ongoing impact studies that deepen their understanding of how they're making an impact on teacher and teacher practice and student outcomes. So here's one piece of research that was really encouraging for me as the team and I began to think about this. So what you'll see is that San Francisco State University did an independent third-party research study, and what it showed was, if I can get to my notes, what it showed was that teachers who used GoBook, 88% of them were able to see an impact in the way that they were actually writing goals, as compared to 25% of the teachers who didn't use it. So we thought that this was pretty powerful data. So in finishing up with the presentation, one of the things that I'd like to leave you with something to think about as we think about our pathway forward is why GoBook? GoBook believes, I believe, that it really is about the teacher and the student. How is it that we can provide a resource for teachers that's easy for them to use and that will be, that they will be successful in implementing? And then what will the impact be on student achievement? And so when we think about how GoBook lessons are written, we have, number one, high standards and expectations. So every last one of the lessons that our teachers will have, the instructional lessons are designed and geared towards the Kansas standards. In each of the lessons, there is a component for academic rigor. Third, there are multiple means of access, so there are different ways for students to be able to make sense of the information, to be able to engage with the information and so forth. And then the final piece, which is really important, is that there's continuous PD and support. So each of the months that we have had this opportunity to pilot, we've had about four to five webinars where GoBook has invited the teachers who have been implementing an opportunity to be able to see different parts of the tool, how it works, as well as be able to take any questions that they may have. And back in November, we also had a training for all of our principals and for all of our special education district leaders as well. So finally, education in teacher practice is all about closing the knowing and doing gap. So what is it that we know works for students? What is it that we know makes an effective IEP? And then the gap in the middle really is in what are the practices? Where do I find them? Where do I get this information from? I have so many things that I have to do as a teacher. Where am I pulling this information from? And so GoBook serves as a bridge between the knowing and doing gap, and it provides instructional scaffolding for our teachers. So finally, I'd like to bring you to GoBook in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. So so far, we have had professional development that has been ongoing, that has been really helpful for the team of teachers and teacher leaders and coordinators that have been using the tool. There's also consultation and coaching available for everyone once we go district-wide that will be available for all teachers. And then finally, with the district-wide access, this will not just provide an opportunity for special education teachers to be able to use the tool, but it'll provide an opportunity for all of our teachers to be able to have access to it. So what you've been waiting for, what was the outcome of the two months? So we started in November with a presentation to principals, sped department leaders, district leaders, and instructional coaches. GoBook provided temporary logins, and it was given to each principal as well as members of our special education team. And in two months, over 4,000 resources from GoBook have been accessed. And what's amazing about that is that the leaders at GoBook say, in two months, you all are doing what districts who have been implementing for two and three years have not been able to do. So what it shows to us is that teachers who are using it right now really believe that there is a need for it, right? They're really seeing benefits of it in terms of working with their students. So really quickly, I'd like to take you to the access report. And so I had GoBook to sort of pull this for us. And you can see by subject area, 39%, so our teachers and teacher leaders are accessing reading, 39%, behavioral and social-emotional learning, 22% of the resources, writing. And then even our related services providers, right? We can also see that they're using it as well. I think that once we get it into all of our teachers' hands, then we'll definitely, Ms. Scott, we'll definitely see, our English learners will definitely see this increase. When we look at the pages that teachers are using the most, look at what they're using. They're looking for ways to help students around reading with fluency and comprehension, right? And then if we drill down a little bit further, we'll see that they're also looking at how to help students with phonics and decoding. And we know that that's really important because that's the key to reading. Fluency, self-management, right? And that's that behavior and social-emotional learning component. How do we teach students how to manage their own behaviors? A lot with comprehension and literature. And if you are a special education teacher that has been using this, well, look at what you've used, developed present levels, 1,265. Ladies and gentlemen, that is the foundation of a well-written IEP. You can't get to IEP goals without a high-quality present-level statement. So when I see this number, I'm encouraged because I know that the few teachers that have access to it, they're using it. Other strategies that teachers and teacher leaders are using, progress monitoring, which is very important if you have students who have an IEP or students who are in the SIT process. And that's pretty much it for our impact report. So you will see in your deck that I've also provided for you the actual contract. And so I'm excited to say that we are getting GoBook at a discounted rate. They are providing it to us, I'm on page, I'm on page four and five of eight of the actual contract. It is a multi-year commitment. However, we have had someone from our finance team to go through the actual contract and put the Kansas language in. If for any reason that we decide that we want to get out of a three-year contract, that language is in there, and GoBook has agreed to that. You will see that they are giving it to the price of us. They're not charging us for the 1,643 total Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. They're actually giving it to us for the number of special education teachers that we have in the district, which is about 267. And so based on that price, this is what we're looking at, $173,740. And so you may be wondering, where would that money come from? So it is money that is set aside over the next 27 months that we would have from the 15% set aside from the IDEA Part B that we are required to have something in place for because of the disproportionality. And then you may be asking yourself, well, Kelly, after those 27 months, like, can we afford this? We definitely can. It is in our budget, and this is something that we can continue to sustain. And so that concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The license is for up to 1,675 users. Is that at one time or total users?
Total users. So once you, so every teacher, so the license will be for one teacher per Kansas City, Kansas. So there are 1,643 teachers at the time that we did this contract. And so they will provide for this price 1,643 licenses. And all of these teachers will have full access to the tool.
So it's not really accessible for the entire staff?
Yes.
How many teachers do we have?
1,643 at the time of this, at the time of this contract.
Okay, so every teacher, whether they're special ed or not, has access to it?
Yes, ma'am. We'll have access to it. That's right.
And if we end up with more teachers next year, can we add?
We can add. It's probably, there's probably some wiggle room for about 30 to 40. In the past, what I've known of them to do was to keep it at this price. And as we've added more teachers, they've been able to just provide us. As we've added more special education staff, they've been able to just provide us a license for it. But I'd imagine if for some reason, you know, that we're looking at adding a large number of teachers, then we'd have to go back to, you know, really thinking about paying for more licenses. But usually, anything between 10 to 30 teachers, in my experience, that has been covered in the contract.
Any other questions?
I do. I have a question as well. Thank you for sharing that with us. I heard a lot of good things from our staff. Did they give you any opportunities for the system? Were they, did they have any concerns?
Oh, they did. And here's the thing. So the great thing about GoBook, when we work with them, you know, it's been things like, we use this particular reading screener. Is it possible for you to add it in so that we can have it embedded in? And within a couple of weeks later, it was done. We're using, they are actually, within a month, they're going to be rolling out like everything connected to the Kansas standards. So just hearing some feedback from our teachers around, you know, well, we didn't have the social studies or we didn't have the pre-K through two, right, standards? And they're like, yep, we're on it. We'll have that within the next month. I think another big piece of feedback, you know, that teachers were struggling with was, because keep in mind, only a small group of people have it, and so it's really been principals sharing it with their teachers. So many of the teachers who have it have not had any training, right? They've just maybe had a coordinator or a teacher leader kind of like walk them through, like a 30-minute period. So of course, the question is, when can we get a full training on this so that we can understand all of the, all of the different components of it?
Okay. One more question.
So the lack of training for everyone has been something that we've heard.
Okay. Makes sense. Were there any questions about logging into multiple systems, or will this at one point take care of infinite campus?
So what can possibly happen is a single sign-on. And so that would be something, once we are able to move forward with it, then we would work with Mr. Fives and his team so that once a teacher logs into one thing, then they're just logged into GoBook and everything else. It has a library, so as they are saving their resources and things of that nature, those things never go away for them. I don't know. Did that answer your question?
I think so.
Yeah.
To get some information over, I'd like the single sign-on.
So and the great thing about it is that it can be used on a traditional laptop, it can be used on a desktop, and it can also be used on a tablet.
And one of the things I would like to bring your attention to, which was a great question, this time freezes, is that the license can be activated by for any participating staff member employed. The reason why that has to read that way is because, you know, we have the sanction, and the sanction is for all students, and it just can't be for one particular type of student. Not all 1,675 teachers will need to do so, but because we have to provide access based on the sanction for everyone, that's why we have to look at it this way.
Dr. Charles, I just want to clarify. Have we ever had anything like this in our district?
We have never. Yes, ma'am. We have never had anything like this. GoBook is the only one of its kind. There isn't another company out there that even makes it, so that makes them like single-source, right? And I, all I can say is, having, having been a special education teacher and a general ed teacher, certainly, you know, going from general ed to special ed, special ed teacher, that changes the game. Because not only are you responsible for your students, you know, their instruction, but you serve as case manager. And so the, writing the IEPs and the data collection and everything that goes along with that, that can be a lot if you don't have the right tools or if you don't have the right training. And so, you know, very rarely am I ever a proponent for, for a tool, for something. You know, I, I think that's the one thing that we're proud of in this district. Like, we're not the district that's going to buy all the bells and whistles, right? We're going to buy the things that are really good. We're going to buy the things that are sound, that are going to provide outcomes for our students. But most importantly, what I've noticed over the past couple of months is that it has just taken the stress levels of the special education teacher down so many levels because it's one more thing that they don't, they don't have to search for, right? It's, I'm putting in my students' data and information, and I'm getting these amazing grade-level appropriate goals, right? Kelly's an eighth grader, but she's on a third-grade level, but I'm giving her an eighth-grade goal, and here are all the scaffolds, right, that I'm going to do throughout the year to get her to that eighth-grade level. And teachers are just excited about that. They don't have to figure it out.
And I will say, when I spoke to the principals at the ESEA conference, they were like, do we need to come up and advocate for this because we love it? And I said, no, ma'am. Dr. Charles.
He's an advocate enough, right? But they, they have been, as I was going through their data, because you can see all of these temporary accounts that were given to the principals, and just how they've taken it and given to their teachers with little to no training, right? And you see these teachers have gotten something, they've grabbed a hold to it, and it's working.
And last thing I want to say is thank you for saving the district money. I'm not sure you negotiated the contract, but we are saving 83%
Yeah.
of the standard rate. That was $595, down to 103. So thank you for being diligent with our money and finances to make sure that a great system will be put in a place and that we are saving money and doing so. So thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome. And thank you for that.
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
Dr. Nguyen.
What determined your whomever, was this a, is this, well, why is a three-year contract?
Because that is so you could do a one-year, a two-year, or a three-year contract. And so the three-year contract seemed to be a little bit, you could get more of a savings if you were able to do a three-year versus a one-year.
And what was that difference?
I can't remember.
Is there no break?
I didn't bring that with me.
And two-year didn't have any savings?
Not as much as a three-year contract.
Of course. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
A question, a couple of questions. Thank you so much for the presentation. Just in terms of, I'm looking at the contract just to make sure I understand. So I know they're going to come on-site this year as needed for implementation. Next year, they'll come on-site a few days for development and whatnot. Is that, is that, are we paying for their travel as well to come on-site? Is that included?
No, they pay for their own travel, and the training is already put in the actual contract. So they'll come out, you know, they're such an amazing company, you know? They'll come out, so they, they came out to do this full-day training for us back in November. Didn't know if anything was going to move forward or not. They still don't know, right? But they gave us access. They provided the highest-quality training that they possibly could to our principals, to our leaders, and that was done at no cost. We've had access to the tool for as long as we've needed, right? And that was provided at no cost. I've seen them come as many times in the first couple of years of implementation because they really want to help districts to get it right. So there are they really wanna help districts to get it right, so there are about, um, so, as soon as we can get started, they'll come in at least three days and provide training, however we say that we need that training to look face-to-face, but also what we will get are, um, every other week, there's going to be a webinar that, um, they will provide, and it is just as simple as you wake up with a beautiful email from GoBook telling you about all the different times that the webinar is, all of the different topics, it's not ever during the school day, right, eleven o'clock when teachers are teaching, it's always three-thirty, four-thirty, five-thirty, um, and if you can't make it in the webinar, they make it on-demand, so if I couldn't make it this afternoon, uh, because I'm at Parents' Partners, tomorrow evening I can go in from the comfort of my home and watch it, right? So they, they provide this ongoing job-embedded professional development, they'll come in the summer, that's probably not even in the contract, right? They've already asked, when are your training dates will come? They are really invested, I think it's because they're educators, they're really invested in their project, product, just as much as the district is.
Great, thank you, and so just to follow up on, on that, um, so all of the, they say, you know, they will do follow-up support, um, and all of that's included in?
All of that is included, that isn't anything we would have to pay extra for.
Thank you. And thank you for sharing the, kind of, the, the, the evaluation pieces that they've, um, pulled together, I'm certain that, and it's included in their contract, that they will do program evaluation.
They will do.
Um, will we also do our own evaluation of the program on a yearly basis?
Yes, yes.
After three years, what is that, could you talk about those metrics?
It's, it's something that, um, Mr. Rand is working on, and he's asked departments to let him know, what would you like for him and his team to study, and that's one of the things I would like for him to do, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was an actual position that the board approved for this, this current budget year, for an evaluator, so we actually have that person in place.
Awesome, thank you.
So where it says, program evaluation nineteen, twenty school year, and since we're starting in January, how does, does this run on academic year, calendar year?
It runs, um, a calendar year, so even during the summer, teachers will still have access to their libraries, they'll still have it, they won't lose anything, um, I'm not necessarily sure that we'll be ready, um, well, maybe January twenty twenty-one will be ready for an impact report, but it is a calendar year.
So the program evaluation is calendar year, not academic year?
So the access is calendar year, the program evaluation more than likely would look at from the beginning of the school year, twenty, twenty twenty-one to the end of the school year, twenty twenty-two. So from August until May.
So our own program evaluator, we can start that at any given time, if, if I'm understanding you right.
The real question is, the contract starts January, so the first year goes to when? First year of the contract?
So from now, from, um, today until February thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Twenty-one.
No.
No, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. So we'll conclude this in mid-year? The three years will run out in mid-year?
We, I think that we can have a say as to when, when the impact report would happen, or when the evaluation would happen.
Or when the end of the contract, the end, what is the end of the contract?
The end of the contract is July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
July, okay.
Any other questions?
So therefore, may I get a motion that we approve the GoBook two-kid contract?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the GoBook two-kid contract, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. We're now ready for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library, by Ms. Carol Levers.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item an update on the board libraries that's submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Board, Dr. Faust. Sorry, um, thank you for allowing me to share the, uh, stats for our circulation, uh, January, as well as our, um, programs and attendance. Just kinda take you back to our mission, um, our vision and our values that you could access. January twenty circulation, we circulated seventy-three thousand and fifty-eight items in the libraries, and, um, both AV items and print are kinda neck-and-neck, and that, uh, makes us feel good in the library world. Our programs, our outreach, uh, in-house, pardon, we had, um, two-hundred-and-ninety-five, if I can, two eighty, two eighty-five programs, and we had three thousand three hundred and twenty-two, uh, people attending those in-house programs. Our outreach, we had a total of sixty-four programs, and a thousand five hundred and eighteen people attended. We also had two kids', uh, cafes, uh, with a, a total of thirty-three kids' cafes, two libraries, that's the main library and the west library, participated in that, and we fed three hundred and twenty-six kids. Our E-Library, that's the E-Community Library, um, we had nine thousand eight hundred and forty people ex, uh, not people, but access to our, um, E-Community Library, uh, and, um, databases access, we had one thousand nine hundred and ninety, um, database access in, in all of our, uh, databases. And ju, the report that I left on your desk is just, uh, some pictures that I wanted to share with you, uh, one of our premium, uh, programs was the Mr. and Mrs. Ethel Schlegel Eagle Day, we had a severe, a snowstorm on the eighteenth, and obviously we couldn't, uh, a, a, a couple of people ventured out, but the majority came the Sunday, and then, uh, we had about five hundred and fifteen people attending that Sunday. I want to so invite you back, we, uh, have a, a heavy schedule with Black Easter Month, and it will be nice to see some of you at some of our programs, thank you.
Thank you, any questions?
Thank you.
Next we have to approve the library human resources and recommendations.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the human resources report and recommendations that's submitted by Kelly Tushman, Chief Human Resource Officer, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Could I get a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the library human resource and recommendations report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposers, the ayes have it, thank you. Next, the appropriate payment of bills for the library.
I mean, if we pay the library bills?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pay the, for the payment of bills for the public library, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, the ayes have it. We're now ready to approve the scheduled holidays.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the proposed schedule holiday and in-service date closings for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Library System for the period of July one, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the scheduled holiday and in-service closings for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposers, ayes have it, thank you. We're now ready for the consent agenda. Can I get a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
All those in favor, and, could I have it seconded, please?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposers, the ayes have it. We're now ready for payment of bills.
I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we pay the bills, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the opposers, the ayes have it.
I'll pose for, madam, just for purposes of, I asked some questions, have they been answered, supplied?
For what?
On payment of bills. I sent you three items?
Right.
Clarification, did you answer them?
I responded to you through an email, did you read it?
I checked the email and it was not there, that there was no response, no explanation.
So therefore, we can go ahead and bring that information up, if you will go ahead and ask your question before we approve it.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, I asked?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I need to withdraw the motion. Well, you usually answer by putting the response into the library.
Okay, just a moment, just let me get clarification, Susan, could you repeat back what was made as far as the motion?
For, it, the motion was?
Payment of the bills.
Payment of the bills, we have a, a motion and a second to pay the bills.
So this is a question? So this is a question?
Correct.
Uh, would you please ask your question in relation to what you sent through the email?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, as you requested, you wanted questions prior to the meeting.
Yes.
I sent you three invoices, or three payables, that I had questioned.
Exactly.
They were not answered, or that, if you can pull up your email, then you can provide the answer.
Just a moment.
But it's not in my email.
Would you just go ahead and ask what your questions are, to save us some time, and then we'll go ahead and get a response?
One was, what was the, um, oh, I think it was two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand for the Safe, Safe something, Safe something LLC? Safe what, Defend, Safe Defend?
Uh, Safe Defend was the installation of the, um, the security system that we're installing in all the elementary schools, that was approved back when we adopted the budget, and that was the payment of the installation of those devices into our schools.
Was that the matching grant we received?
No, we, we
That was a new?
paid it first, and then we reapply for the, the grant, and so, actually, we would use those dollars to pay for the high school and middle school installations for the matching grant.
Okay, the others was the KC Rural's dues and fees?
I don't know what that one is, but I will research it
Okay, and the other one?
and put it in the library.
And the other one was the, um, invoice for legal fees? Did you reply to that, Ms. Drew?
So when we saw, it said supply, um, detailed invoice, we weren't sure what that meant by detailed invoice.
The invoice for the legal fees, based on our contract, with legal fees?
So you'd want, so our attorney, you wanted invoice for twenty, she wants the details of everything that took place for the?
Well, whatever the paperwork's turned in for the, in, legal fees, just, you know, our contract for legal fees has qualifications, essentially, as, as a criteria, we have a contract for legal fees.
Well, actually, what we get is, each month, the, um, MVP provides us with, um, a snippet of everything that they do, and we sign off on it, because the board has already voted on
I understand that.
the contract, so?
Just ask for the invoice for that twenty thousand dollars.
But I'm, my question is, is that, how do, how would you provide that, because that's different, what the, what your office provides for us is probably different than what would be?
We have a, uh, we, we provide a detailed invoice, it breaks everything down to a tenth of an hour, that's provided to the district, um, you know, certainly you can make it available to the board, uh, it does have some attorney-client and work-product information in it, so you, it's not a public document in that sense, you'd have to redact it if you wanted to, um, do it in a public fashion, but in terms of sharing it with board members, you certainly could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with?
So it will be supplied when?
You will have it?
Susan will be able to get that for you.
Today.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving forward, how do you want to proceed with your questions, Madam Chair?
You will continue to do that, it's just that somehow there was a breakdown in making sure that it got to them, I had assumed that I had passed it on so that they would have the answer here, but I would do follow-up in making sure that you do get responses to what you're asking.
Okay, so let me ask you, if you want us to report to you by, or submit a question by, let's say, noon, then can, is it reasonable to ask, and this is not a reflection on, on our bird, bird clerk, board clerk, but at what point is the cutoff for adding new material to the agenda? Because then that, that kinda, um, smashes into your request, but which would then, would be fine, 'cause we can continue to ask, um, so if, if, with, with that knowledge, you realize that as we continue to add things after your, your one o'clock, whatever, Monday, then we can, we're still going to, um, be, let's say, the possibility is there, so you recognize that, so my question was then, at, if you, at what point should one expect a response, is that by four on Monday, or nine o'clock, or how, how do you wanna do that?
Well, the information that you're asking, when, once it comes to me, I will forward it to Dr. Faust if he has not received it, or to the department where it's supposed to go, and then I look at it, and then I send a response to you, to let you know whether it will be added into the agenda, and yesterday around three forty-five, I sent that information to you, so therefore?
There was nothing on, in the financial payables?
No, no, that would be addressed at our board meeting.
Correct, and so, oh, and so that's your?
That's my?
Anytime the payables, they'll only be answered at the board meeting?
Anytime you send any information to me, and if I can't respond and answer, it will be brought up at the board meeting, whereas there will be a response that will be given to you.
Okay.
And if necessary, then we can, uh, if an answer cannot be given, we can postpone it and put it off to the next meeting
Okay.
that you can have it, and also to consider, you have a copy of the information as to when we have, uh, the agenda prep meeting, so if your questions may come up about anything, you can send it to myself, and we can make sure that it gets added on to the agenda before it comes to you.
Right, but that doesn't, that, that's not particular to the topic we're talking about.
Right.
At, at one o'clock, when we get the agenda, there are questions, submit them to you, however, as you add more data, and we've passed that one o'clock deadline, then that, that's okay, but you recognize that after that one o'clock, we will ask questions here.
Exactly.
You recognize?
Exactly, and what we're trying to do is to make sure that we keep the lines of communication open, so that we can have an adequate response for any questions that come up, and, and, and recognizing at times that a mistake may be made, but we will fix it, and try to make sure everything is done decent and in order.
I also want to bring your attention to also have that acknowledgement.
Okay, we will work through it, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
So, um, Susan, we just need to vote?
Vote, Dr. Nguyen, voted no.
That was just a discussion.
So?
So we need, so could I have, uh, everyone to, uh, approve the payment of bills? The motion has been made, it's been seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. We're now ready to go, uh, into, uh, executive session, I need a motion for the board to recess to executive session, uh, at?
Ten o'clock.
At ten o'clock, for ten minutes, to be?
Madam President, what about the journey? Do we, do that, approve the consent agenda?
Oh, okay, she was, okay, thank you. So therefore, um, again, I need to, um, I need a motion for the board to recess to executive session at ten, for ten minutes to begin planning for teaching negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer, employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting will resume at ten-ten, with no action to follow.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, we're in executive session. May I get a motion that we come back into recess, meeting?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we resume our meeting. Okay, at this time, we have another executive session.
Need to vote.
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposers, the ayes have it. At this time, I need a motion for the board to recess to executive session at ten-eighteen, for five minutes under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved, the board will return at ten, ten-twenty-three, ten-twenty-five, um, with no action to follow. I'm sorry, ten-twenty-three, with no action. I'm sorry, 10:23 with no action to follow. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we will go to executive session and will return at 10:23. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Could I get a motion that we resume our meeting, please?
Second. Oh, make a motion. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're now ready for communications, starting with Dr. Faust.
Good morning, everyone. A lot of things have gone on. We just came back from DC where the school board was recognized for academic growth at the advocacy portion of the event institute. And then also, we were in Atlanta at the National Title I Conference where one of our schools was also given a national award for closing the achievement gap in, in that timeframe. So we've had a lot of celebratory things today. I'll be headed to Topeka to a PTA award. We have one of our schools who will be receiving an award at the state level. So this is a great time to be a part of our school district and we're just most thankful for the work that our staff is doing. It is clearly showing that what you are doing as a board, what we're doing is making a difference in our schools. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Janie?
It's been exciting the last couple of weeks. I went to the Employee Wellness Fair and got to touch base with a lot of employees that I hadn't seen for a while. They had some good information there. The Black History Program at Memorial Hall, I had never been up in the ballroom before. It is beautiful. The skylights are just, anyway, I'll stop there. I went to the Saturday Academy Breakfast last Saturday and the kids presented the projects they've been working on. They've been, an emphasis on mental health and wellness and how that affects your learning, which is, I think, is a really good subject for all of us to learn about. Went to my first bowling meet at KC Bowl. We have three high schools that have bowling teams and they're not talked about very much, but those kids are, I throw a ball and it goes in the gutter. These kids are throwing balls and they twist and turn and make a strike. Amazing. Basketball games, middle school and high school, wrestling meets. Last week, I went to Claude Hike and read to some students, which was really fun. The kids had really good questions. We discussed the book that we were reading and then they turned around and read to me because they were concerned about my voice. I said, "Why don't we read to you?" That was kind of sweet. Yesterday, I visited Quandero in Carruthers in New Chelsea and you should go in and look and see what we are asking of our third graders in math. I remember memorizing times tables in fourth grade. Our kids are going way beyond that in third grade now. So it's not the same schools that we had. I just invite everyone to go visit a school and sit there and leaf through the math book and listen to the kids tell you what they're doing. I think that's about it. Oh, Whittier's Music Program. I didn't want to forget that. They have two grade levels. It was, gosh, nothing, I think it was kindergarten and fifth grade that it at this time. But they split it up through the year. They have two grade levels at each concert, which makes it very nice. You can just, parents can come and enjoy and there's just something about our kids when they start singing and playing instruments, their creativity. School goes beyond test scores like we've all been saying. Test scores are important, but they're not the only thing we need to look at. We need to look at the whole child. So that's-
Thank you.
I had an exciting week. I went to the ESEA Conference for Title I. It was awesome to see New Stanley on stage. I want to thank the New Stanley family for, kids for sending all the nice cards and notes to us that we received at the last meeting. They are so awesome. At the conference, it was, it was great to hear from turnaround superintendents. The main ones I went to involved how they were able to turn around their districts and turnaround meaning that they were failing students. Students were failing because the focus was not put on achievement and test scores. The focus was just getting the students there or just, you know, going along with what the community expectations. The one that really touched my heart was Selma, Alabama. Selma, you know, was part of the civil rights movement and they have a continual legacy about pride and joy, but their students were failing. It broke my heart because I'm like, how could such a great town move from civil rights-focused era to failing their children? Their response was, "The board and community stopped caring." That was, that hurt my heart. And I said, "How could leaders stop caring about the students?" And the superintendent clarified, "They cared, but they didn't care the right way. They didn't care enough to put systems in place for student achievement. They didn't care to analyze the data. They didn't care to bring in people from outside who knew how to do turnaround work to honestly be able to take the community from poverty to success." And so upon talking to her, she said, "It's a mentality that you as a leader are challenged to do. You are challenged to ask yourself, are you truly helping children when they can achieve or know how to read or do math? The prison to pipeline, the prison, school to prison pipeline goes by fourth grade reading. Where is your fourth grade reading?" I said, "Oh, my goodness." I could, I could only hold my head down. I said, "We are not where we, we need to be." But she asked me a question, "Do you have a turnaround superintendent?" I said, "I do." She said, "Do you have turnaround teachers?" I said, "I think I do, but I'm going to clarify to see how many we have in our district." So I reached out to Dr. Faust and I said, "How many turnaround teachers do I have, do we have in our district?" He said, "You see the 20-plus teachers who are here? They are who are turning around this district." So I said, "Okay, we are part of that charge to turn around ourselves." And I, I'm looking forward to the parent as partners because we've been talking about parents as partners since I've been on the board when we went to the schools to hear our community because we're a board that does include our community in so many things that we do. So my charge is to continue to help get the word out, the community as partners or the Parents as Partners program. We need all parents on board who have questions, who have concern, who are like, "What's going on in the schools?", to come and be part. So it's, it's my responsibility and our responsibility to make sure that they know that these things are going on. Last thing I want to say is thank you to the board members and the community and the cabinet for supporting us to go to these conferences. Truly, we are learning at these conferences. The principal said, "We, we have such a testimony to take back." And one more thing, and Chantel was one of the teachers who went when it was in Kansas City last year. She asked herself, "What do I need to do to be on that stage?" She talked to other districts. What do I need to do to be on that stage? They said, "Track your number. Track your goal. Track student achievement. Look and see where your students need to improve." She found someone on her team, a teacher, who was passionate about data and the teacher tracks no extra pay, no extra salary. That teacher's a turnaround teacher and she loves students and she said, "I will help track the data so that our kids will be on track." And guess what? They were on center stage. Our other principals asked, "What did you do?" So I'm sure there'll be a request coming and saying, "What can we do to, what can the board do to help them be up there?" Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll piggyback on Janie. I also attended the breakfast at Kansas City, Kansas Community College over the, over Saturday. So that was really nice to be able to sit with the students. We had three students at our table. They taught us more than I was ready for on Saturday morning, so I enjoy spending time with them. And then I also was able to attend one of our basketball games. During the week, I was exhausted, but the children were still hyped at like 9:00 at night. So it was good to be able to see their energy and that they were committed to being to their, at their school after hours.
Oh, Mina London and I both wrote the spelling bee.
Yes, we were.
Forgot about that.
Thank you. Yes, we were.
Mr. Lopez?
No, just a thank you to, again, attended the Black History Month kickoff and that was a great event and I'm so thankful to everyone that was present. Thank you to all the teachers that are doing some amazing work in our district. You know, I know we might have the 20-plus that are, that are turnaround teachers, but all of our teachers are so important to all of the work that we're doing in this journey. So I just want to, want to give a shout out to all of our staff because you're doing some amazing work in our schools for our kids. Thank you.
I just, oh. Well, I just want to thank Mr. Franco. I saw him earlier and his other colleagues. Every Tuesday, the Oneida County delegation has lunch and that was like civic engagement day. And so we had students come up from Schlegel, from Sumner, and they were able to see the process and also join the delegation for lunch. So that was very nice. And so a blanket welcome and a blanket invitation to the district that anytime, you know, we, not only we have pages, but they're always welcome, especially if students come up on Tuesday, they can share lunch with our delegation. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to say, I too went to the Blacks in Government Black History Program and it was excellent. I learned a lot. I didn't know that the first black firefighter, the female, was my cousin. And you know, she said some things that when I talked to her, she said, "Hello, cousin." Didn't know that, but knew of her, but didn't know the connection. And just want to put a plug in for Gear Up. We gotta get more kids in that program. They have it set up for 3,000. We don't have 3,000 kids in the program. And they're trying to help with us to get them prepared for college and doing some amazing things with them. But we just got to figure out a way to get more people involved. And I look forward to coming to tonight at 5:30 with the Parents as Partners program and that's phenomenal, something that we need and we just got to figure out a way to get people out or figure out a way to go to them. If they can't come, we got to figure out a way to go to them. But this is a good start.
Thank you. Just one last thing is that I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC for the advocacy, K A, National School Board Association Advocacy Institute. And one of the things that was so enlightening to me in being there is the issues that we have here, that we deal with, mental health issues, dealing with academic concepts and trying to find strategic ways, teacher shortage. And I hear a lot of people coming to us and saying, "We need this, this, this." It's nationwide and that's the one thing that I did learn. We, it's not just within Kansas City, Kansas, it's throughout our entire nation. And so we have to collectively work together to try to find a way in which we can fix the problems to work towards student achievement and student success. So with that being said, on our board calendar, we have the events that are listed there, just highlighting the Parents as Partners tonight at Eisenhower Middle School. Family advocacy is supposed to be going on between February 12th as well as February 14th. Hopefully, the weather will not prevent that because it's necessary for parents to come and talk to teachers. And then everything else is listed accordingly. You will be receiving something by the end of this week in relation to our school board retreat, which is on February 22nd. And so therefore, we ask that you govern yourselves according to the information that's listed on the calendar. With that being said, may I have a motion that we-
Excuse me, Madam President. We, I had asked something and it just may-
That's right.
-with the calendar. Is it possible on the 22nd that discipline could be part of our discussion?
Yes, it can. It can. We'll add it on.
My question, is the retreat open meeting?
Yes, it is.
So public would have access to the office?
Yes.
Where will they sit?
Well, it's, it's not a, it's not a hugely large space, but it is open to the public. So if the public wants to be present, we'll make available rooms to, for them to sit and be present. It's, you know, it's a workshop design in terms of what the goal is for retreats, so it's not quite the same as a public meeting where you're sitting there making decisions. There's no items, no action.
Right, but it has to be public.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, no.
And then, Madam Chair, I had called Mr. Birch and I asked about, what is the protocol? When are we airing current meetings? When I get calls and I verified, when you look on cable and you view the school board meetings, what is showing or what is being aired, I think is one in October. So what is the, why aren't current meetings being aired?
Okay, what we, what we will do is I will meet with him and we will sit down and discuss it and then I'll have an answer for you at our next board meeting. Okay, thank you.
And I want to thank Susan really quick. She's been doing our board recap highlights that are posted in, under the board area of our website. So thank you, Susan, for updating the board highlights for the community to be able to see that quick summary.
So with that being said, could I get a motion that we adjourn our meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.